Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 15th, 2017 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been an executive session discussing the employment history of particular persons and litigation. May I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting?
I shall move.
May I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we will start with the president's report.
I will say the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this flag, and which is one nation, united in the resolve of the Constitution of America.
So, this is our first meeting since election day, and I would like to congratulate all of the candidates who ran for town board and the new town board members. We look forward to working with the town board, as we all do always do, in collaboration in the best interests of our community. So, congratulations and thank you to all the candidates who ran. It's always good to have contested elections. So, on behalf of the board, congratulations. Let's see, the next thing I'd like to discuss is the impact of the proposed federal tax overhaul on our state and local property taxes and how that would impact state funding. As you know, there, in the proposed federal tax changes, there have been changes to state and local tax deductions. The House, the House bill would eliminate property taxes, I'm sorry, the Senate bill would eliminate property tax deductions in their entirety, whereas the House bill would eliminate, would cap the deduction at $10,000. As we know, our area has a very high cost of living, and our public schools are funded in some of our districts disproportionately by property taxes. So, these changes would impact our ability to raise revenue. The, so the House is voting on Thursday, and the $10,000 cap on local property taxes is a realistic threshold for most states and certain parts of New York, but in Westchester, the average tax, the average resident tax is at $16.5,000 a year. That's the average local property tax. So, that's way above the $10,000. And, you know, certainly in our district, the average is higher than that. The House bill would also reduce the mortgage deductibility from $1 million to $500,000, whereas the Senate bill would retain the $1 million deductibility. So, you know, just to put this in perspective, states like New York really subsidize federal spending. The DiNapoli report, one of his reports shows that for every dollar that New York sends to the federal government, we get 84 cents back to the dollar. And the national average is 1.1 dollar and 18 cents. New York sends about $48 billion more to the federal government than we get back. So, the current deductions mitigate the impact of property, local property taxes. So, obviously, if these taxes are not deductible, it will put a lot of pressure on us and on our budgets. We already are restrained significantly by the tax cap, and, you know, so we have to think about the impact on the local taxpayer and the impact on our ability to raise revenue. And, you know, our local, our representatives are aware of this, and they are not in favor of these changes to the tax. So, there's nothing really for our community to do, but I just thought that we would bring awareness here to the impacts of these changes that are happening on the federal level. It could also cause a lot of high-income earners to move out of New York.
Or New York, why was it state tax, like they should?
Right. Well, that, you know, that's certainly another issue. That's a separate issue.
No, it's not a separate issue. It's part and parcel of this issue. In fact, it's the very issue.
Right. But that's a separate, separate process, so.
Raise the grade and lower the world.
I think that, that would certainly, that would certainly affect the impact of these changes. So, in any event, I just want people to be aware that these changes that are taking place on the federal level could potentially have, could have a real impact on our school district.
Well, people have to understand that even if property values devalue as a result of trying to equalize the property taxes with the cost of housing, we still have the same obligations, and so they'll just have to raise the mill rate. I mean, it's just, it's not, it's a cycle. It's not, it's not like we can just not fund our schools this way. It's the only option we have.
Right. Well, there's also the option of looking at certain mandates. That, that's something that was promised with the tax cap that never did, did happen. But we'll see, we'll see what happens. The House will vote on Thursday, and I'm not quite sure when the Senate votes. So, that's all I have for the president's report, unless anyone else would like to add anything for this, anything that's taken place in your liaison work? No? Okay. So, I will turn it over for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vicky. So, before we have our presentation from West Orchard, I just have a few Grafflin, excuse me, I just have a few items that I'd like to mention. First is, at our next board meeting, we'll be introducing our new website platform that we plan to have live on December 18th, as well as some ways that we are anticipating leveraging social media to communicate with our community. So, that's just a little preview of what's coming on December 6th. Some curricular areas that we've been focusing on in the district, I just want to update the board because we will be talking about them throughout the year, is that the department heads at the high school under Robert's leadership are engaging in a process to determine how we can open enrollment in our, in our high demand courses, our AP courses. So, at some point during the school year, Robert will come and speak with you about some considerations that the faculty has with regards to that issue. There's been a lot of discussion about how to do that, whether it be through a waiver process, whether we would start talking about maybe capping the number of AP courses that kids can take. All of this is just a part of a conversation right now, not, I'm not saying we're doing any of those, taking any of those actions. I just want you to know that this is being discussed right now at the, at the high school level, and will be presented to you at some point in the future. We are working on ELA alignment in both middle schools, so those are discussions that our middle school principals and our, and Mary are working on collectively in terms of, you know, what, what direction is our program headed in, in terms of the workshop versus a more balanced approach. So, those are all discussions that are happening. Our eighth grade math teachers, along with our high school teachers and our administrators are talking about, is there a way to open up more access to algebra in grade eight? So, we'll be talking about that in the future as well. Special Ed has been looking at whether or not we could offer a life skills program in one of our middle schools. So, again, that's a discussion that's taking place. I'm not saying that that's happening, but we are looking at that. Josh is working with a team to figure out how we can support one-to-one computing, five through 12, and then what, what, how we would support some sort of program in that, in a similar fashion at the elementary school. So, those are discussions that are happening, and those discussions actually are taking place in partnership with the foundation. And again, we'll be talking about that in the future with you, because those are right at the beginning stages of that. And then, as you all know, all of our principals are working with their faculties and with each other to prepare for these project-based learning spaces that are coming online in many of our buildings in September. And one of our primarily folk, primary focuses is to make sure that students have equal access to these, to these spaces across the curriculum, both vertically and horizontally in all of our buildings. So, those are conversations that are happening. You'll be hearing a little bit about that tonight in Grafflin's presentation, but I just want to let you know that that's some of the work that's been going on in the district this year so far. Okay? So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Jamie and her team. We so appreciate them being here tonight to talk about.
We're going to give you, you know, we'd like to welcome you to Team Grafflin.
Oh, wow. Goodness. Look at that.
I think you already have one, Jeff.
I do.
You can have another one.
I'll take another one. I'll probably wear my first one.
Thank you.
And it's not underwear.
No.
This is like, this is like shirts.
This is like, this is great.
I feel like I need to put some on. I don't want my parents to like it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very cool.
On the first Friday of every month, we wear those.
Really?
So, you know. And so, you'll see some pictures tonight of kids in their Team Grafflin shirts.
We don't get these from Warren Brook or West Orchard.
That's because Grafflin is the greatest.
I am going to let you know that, you know, Jamie did a mock presentation for all the administrators today. She did not mention that this was happening, so.
No, because I didn't want West Orchard or.
I could jump the ball.
To coffee. Competition's very high.
Good evening, everybody. I have come to always introduce myself when I present. So, for those who, I haven't yet had the privilege of meeting, I'm Jamie Edelman, and I have the honor of being both the principal of Grafflin and Grafflin's biggest cheerleader. I will just digress for a quick minute, and I was with my family a couple of summers ago in Atlantis, and one of the things that my son commented on, that everybody in the Bahamas seems to really love their job, even from the cab driver to the waitress to the people around the pool, everybody is so happy and loves their job. And my 13-year-old son turned to me and said, "Mommy, do you love your job like that?" And I could honestly and truly answer affirmatively, because I do feel that Grafflin is a very special place to be. So, with that said, tonight, we're going to talk to you a little bit about the wonderful things that are going on at Grafflin. And I think we are all in agreement that the children of Chappaqua deserve the richest, happiest, most powerful education that we can give them. And at Grafflin, they get it. Every day, our students are engaged in ongoing literacy work. They read and write a lot. The children learn math concepts and solve problems that sometimes require them to count on their fingers, or use manipulatives, or collaborate with a classmate. Sometimes, they work in a small group; other times, they work with their whole class; and sometimes, they're working independently. Our classrooms, kindergarten through fourth grade, are all very vibrant, busy places all day long, and I'm going to let you take a look. So, those pictures were from one day at Grafflin. One day last week, I walked around the school with my camera and walked into every single classroom in the building once or twice and just snapped pictures. And I was so proud of all of the joyful learning that was going on throughout our building. The teachers and the students were all working very hard, but what stood out the most was that everybody seemed really very happy doing the work that they were doing. Sometimes during the school day, our students are engaged in instruction that is quite innovative, and that's the topic of our conversation tonight. We have, over the past several years, been embarking on this journey toward innovative learning. And it's funny, because it took us a couple of conversations to really come up with the definition of what is this that we're doing? What do we call this? We were using terms like the maker movement, or terms like robotics. And we agreed, I was one day at a meeting in the ed center, that we're going to call this innovative learning. And maybe we didn't make it up, and Josh knew that that's what it was all the time, but during that meeting, we thought we had come up with this, this great term for the work that we were doing. And there are many different facets to innovative learning. There's what we talk a lot about, which is the project-based learning, that might have its foundation in a project, or a problem, or a challenge, that kids are really solving some kind of problem, and through the work on that problem, they're learning the skills and content of the curriculum. We have maker programs and activities, and in all of our schools, we have maker spaces and activities where kids are actually tinkering and building and creating things. They are going through a process of design that, where they're coming up with a brainstorming ideas, and then making something, and then going back and revising it, and coming up with another iteration, and going through that process. We have coding and robotics. Last year, in our third grade, they started a robotics program that was hugely successful, and it's now moving up to our fourth graders as well. We have virtual reality. Augmented reality is a part of innovative learning. We're not doing that yet at Grafflin. But in the photo that you see, the top photo, you'll see two children on a computer, which is a virtual reality computer, and it's called Z-Space. We have two, we have four of them in the building that we got through a grant from CSF. And those students, if you look closely enough, you can see that they're looking at the human heart, which, if they are to wear the 3D glasses, they will hold the heart in their hand as they're learning about it, and, and really and truly feel that heart beating. So, it's pretty, pretty incredible. And we're also beginning, now that we have lots of devices in the building, to explore personalized learning, and making sure that students are really getting a program and a curriculum that is just right for them. So, as I mentioned, we started this journey a few years ago, and it really was the brainchild of our former library media specialist, along with our assistant Debbie Elspah, who's here with us this evening. And they decided one day that they wanted to transform the science lab at Grafflin into a maker space. And so, they sent out an email to the entire faculty to say, "Give us whatever you have hiding in your classroom that kids might use to make something." And so, we got a lot of yarn. We got a real, a whole lot of yarn. We got buttons and paper of every shape and size, and beads, and all this stuff that we put into this room to have, to be a place where kids could come and explore with making and tinkering and innovating and being creative. And as a piece of that, Allison would send home, once a month, to the, to our families, a maker project that kids could do at home. So, it started out with make a haunted house, and so we would display all these haunted houses very prominently in the front hallway of Grafflin, and kids would look at them. But then, something really wonderful happened when Allison sent home this cardboard challenge. And the cardboard challenge is based on Kane's Arcade, which you might have heard about a couple of years ago. But there was this boy who spent summer vacation at his father's auto shop, and he was bored, and so he took the boxes that were in the auto shop, and he created a whole arcade out of cardboard. And one day, somebody who, I don't know if it was a reporter, or somebody who, you know, was able to get the word out, took pictures, and this child got a lot of publicity for his cardboard arcade. So, in the spring, Allison sent home this challenge to our students to create an arcade game out of cardboard. We got more projects than we did with any prior project. And Debbie and Allison put them all in one of our empty classrooms, and we had Grafflin's arcade. And every single class visited this cardboard arcade. Now, when you think of our kids, our kids have access to the latest and the greatest video games that have the most incredible graphics that are out there, and they were having the time of their life playing these simple homemade cardboard games. And it was, it was incredible, and it was really fun. It was, it's when our, our initiative took off. It really was the moment where we were, that Debbie and I thought, they're really buying into this, and it's really taking off, and we're really getting some momentum. Our kids want to innovate and create and make and build. Also, at the end of that year, all of the elementary schools received a grant, or wrote a grant and then received it that summer from CSF, to really stock our maker space with the things that are supposed to be in a maker space. So, we started last year in a really good place. We painted our maker space white, we got new furniture, we stocked it with robots and all kinds of other really exciting things for kids to do. And our library media specialist would bring her classes sometimes to the maker space to engage in projects. But we also did a maker space project at every one of our faculty meetings, so that teachers would feel equipped to then take it back to their classrooms. It was really interesting to watch our teachers engage in these activities. Some people needed to learn a little bit about sharing. Some people needed to learn a little bit about trying their own idea first. We quickly learned who this kind of work came naturally to, and we all wanted to be in their group. But it was a lot of fun, and it really raised, raised the awareness and the comfort with letting go with some of the usual control of a classroom, to let kids construct and create meaning from the work that they're doing. And Allison started to work with some teachers, that we call our early adopters, on really aligning projects with the curriculum, and she would go into their classrooms and help them to do that. At this stage, most of the activities were add-ons. They weren't related to the curriculum. But what came out of them that was really of interest to our teachers were, we saw kids really growing in some of those learning dispositions, like perseverance, and courage, and creativity, and imagination, and curiosity. And so, that became a really important part of the work as well. I read anything out from that year. So, then, we're, we're now, we're in 2017, 2018, and what happened at the end of last year is our library media specialist, who was really the energy behind this work, resigned from Chappaqua, and we were so fortunate to get a new library media specialist who had done a lot of work in her prior positions in, with project-based learning and maker space. The other thing that happened that put us really in a position to maximize the movement that we made with this, was our art teacher became full-time. So, those were two instrumental people that were there to support teachers and to keep the work alive and growing and moving forward. We also had many teachers that took advantage of the various professional development opportunities that were offered here in the district this, this summer. So, people returned to school feeling very enthusiastic and anxious to try some of it. So, that was really exciting, and we felt that we were in a, in a good place with all of that. The other thing that is awesome is we have a lot of devices available to kids. I would say, we are probably close to two to one at Grafflin, so we have iPads now in kindergarten, we have lap, kindergarten first grade, we have laptops in second and third grade, and we have Chromebooks in fourth grade. So, integrating the technology into all of this work is really exciting also. And we are getting to the place where the projects are related to the curriculum. How do we start to think about what we teach in different ways so that we can integrate this work into it, so it enhances and enriches the work that we're already doing? And the third grade has kind of taken the lead on that. They have already done a project where they created their own country, and some of the classes did a mystery Skype, where they Skyped with students from another place in the world, and our students had to guess where they were by asking questions. So, that was really interesting. At yesterday's faculty meeting, all of the teachers worked on creating a project. So, every child will engage in project-based learning at least once throughout the year, and will visit the maker space several times, because the librarian is so involved in that. And we're working really hard to get ready for our Global Learning Center. It's coming now. It feels a little fast and furious, and we're all excited about it, a little anxious. It's going to be this incredible space. We want to make sure that we do right by the space and do right by our kids. So, we're working really hard to get everybody ready for that. So, I use the term, we have early adopters, so there's some teachers who jumped on board, on board early on, and have engaged in that work from the very beginning. And I have three of those people here with me tonight to tell you about the work that's going on in their rooms. And I often tell them that I'm obsessed with the work that they're doing, and I'm obsessed with the work that they're doing because it is transformational in, in so many ways. In the engagement of our students, it has been transformational for them. And when I look at who's sitting next to me, these are mid-career teachers, sorry. They're not the newbies, and this has been, it has been incredibly exciting to watch how they have been energized by this work, how they are out there trying something new, and really growing as professionals. So, I'm going to turn things over to Warren, and before I do, I just want to let you know, Warren is going to leave as soon as he's done speaking to be at his son's sports dinner that's taking place right now. So, I have been in his classroom, I think enough, because I'm really obsessed with the make writing, and can answer any questions you might have. If not, we can certainly get the answers to you and send them back an email.
Warren?
Thank you. I'm Warren Whitney. I'm a third-grade teacher at Grafflin. And just to echo what Jamie's been saying, I am greatly convinced of the value of this kind of learning. I think it's crucial to our students that we continue moving in this direction. And one thing that I continue to struggle with is what Jamie brought up, is connecting this to our curriculum. I mean, lots of times, it does seem like an add-on, an invaluable add-on. However, this summer, I attended a summer camp for young writers. It was incoming third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders that took place at Seven Bridges. And it was run by Angela Stockman, who I was not familiar with, but I had heard the term "make writing" when I applied for the camp. And I, I wanted to see what the connection was. I really wasn't sure what it was going to be when I started. And as Jamie said, it's been transformational. Angela Stockman has found a way to take making and interlock it with writing, and it is a seamless part of the curriculum. I'll elaborate. Really, what she has introduced has two facets to it. The initial component is having the kids work with materials on a writing idea for a brief period of time, like five to seven minutes. Then afterwards, we still continue with the writing workshop. We have our mini lesson. And then, the second component is while they're writing, although I have used post-it notes in the past to help students with organizing their writing, in this make writing camp, it was the primary way that students. in this make writing camp, it was the primary way that students organized. And we weren't using a status graphic organizer. That was a sheet of paper broken into rectangles that they might fill in. It was actually creating the graphic organizer with Post-it notes. So, what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit more about each of these components. So, the first component is the challenge, is what we call the challenge. And when I jumped into this, I was thinking, alright, I'm going to, am I going to do this? I'm going to try to do this every day. And there is a student from my class actually in the audience and he can tell you, we pretty much do it every day except when we're working on our final drafts. So, I collected a bunch of things, blocks, Lego, clay. I made something called a build bag where I just threw a bunch of stuff. That's what you see the top build there made out of. I got little things of Play-Doh. The point is for them to play with these items as they're playing with the ideas. And one thing that I started realizing is that a lot of our students and a lot of our children are not ready to play with words yet. Like, it's too much of an abstract concept. So, by allowing them to play in a physical way, it's allowing their brains to work with words and work with these ideas. So, I put some examples of questions that they might be building on the bullets there. So, one of the things we started the year with was writing a small moment, just a brief story of a memory, something they accomplished. So, a maker question might be, what is the big event in your small moment? What's the most important thing? Well, here's your materials, go ahead. So, they would have to start building things and as they're building, I would circulate and ask them, and this is a crucial part, is to have them start verbalizing what they're building. And some kids are just building, they're playing with it. But they get there. And as they're putting the pieces together, they'll say, okay, yeah, this is when I went on the roller coaster. Okay, well, what's the big event there? Well, yeah, my car is stuck here. See, so when we got stuck on the roller coaster, that was the big event. So, by having them work with the materials in a physical way, it allowed them to solidify their ideas and really plan out where their writing was going. Then, once they had their ideas and after the mini lesson, we would move into a planning stage. And that, for the most part, was with Post-it notes. And once again, I, it transformed the way that I work with students in a couple of ways. When we used Post-it notes in the past, it was usually to mark one thing. Or it wasn't the whole process, it was just one part of it. Here, the students created their whole piece of writing with Post-it notes. If you look in the lower left-hand corner there, that's from a student, that's from a writing notebook, a writer's notebook from a student in my class. And it's a rainbow, it's an arc. And the yellow Post-it notes are the events in the arc. And then, once the students had that, we would add in other colors. So, for the pink, for example, can you add in dialogue someplace in your story? Can you add in feelings? That would be the blue color. Can you add in thinking? You know, that would be the green. So, instead of what I'd found in the past when I asked students to do this, they would add to the beginning or to the end, they were putting them in the middle. And as I've been meeting with parents these past few weeks, I've been struck by how often the students are applying these strategies throughout their stories. And you'll see a varied sentence, event, dialogue, thinking, feelings. And it's a real story. It has depth, it has details. And I think a big part of it were the two strategies that I've brought to the classroom from make writing. The chance for them to really play with their ideas ahead of time with the materials. And then during writing workshop, the chance to work with these Post-it notes to plan their writing. And the flexibility and the color coding, I think, add to their level of thinking that they can bring to their writing.
So, we wanted kids to come and we have Joe here, which is so awesome. So, if Warren goes to the sports dinner and you have questions, we have Joe.
Not to put you on the spot, Joe.
I asked him, he doesn't even mind. But we do have some kids talking about their writing to share with you.
We're from Esther Wendy's third grade class. We're going to be showing you what we do almost every morning that they are called challenges. You can come back to my classroom anytime to see them.
We use challenges to help us with our writing. Like, we build like what we're going to write that day. Like, we build the thesis, we build the reasons, and we have materials to help us, like clay, Legos, and build bags. And in the build bag, there are like popsicle sticks, paper clips, and like cars and Play-Doh.
It helps us with our writing because like, if we forget of what we're going to write, we can look at our model that we made and they're going to remind us of what we're writing about.
Posts help us by like organizing our speeches or small moments, like our beginnings, then our, like, then what goes first, second, and third, and our endings.
So, it's just, it's so fascinating because I walked in one day and they were making models from their build bag of their thesis statement. Now, like, there was no real way to build a model of the thesis statement. But to watch them start to think of, you could almost see the wheels turning in their head about, so what is my thesis statement going to be? And how am I going to make that really clear? And so, it's almost as if the hands-on part is just helping to clarify and to process the thoughts. But it's really exciting and if you do have a chance, they invited you. Warren can't say anything about it. So, it is worth coming by to see because it's hard to understand it. But it is, it's really exciting.
And just to add on, like, I found benefits that I didn't envision originally. When we're using those small Post-it notes, a number of third graders have difficulty sometimes knowing when to end a sentence. And now I can just tell them, each Post-it note is a sentence. And it's phenomenal. It's a physical way to show them how to break up their writing into, how to edit their writing.
I could write a story like one Twitter tweet at a time?
But you know what? One Post-it feels really manageable. It's not a blank page in front of you that is intimidating and overwhelming. A Post-it is, I can do it, I can do that. I can fill that little space with a thought or an idea or a feeling or a thesis. So, thank you, Warren.
You're welcome. And you are welcome and if there are, to my classroom any point, but if there are further questions, I'm sure Jamie can pass them on if they're not answered tonight.
Thank you, Warren, for coming.
Congratulations on your slide.
So, next Sarah's going to talk to you about the work that she has been doing for years now. And, you know, I talked about how you could see the wheels spinning in Warren's students' class as they're making their thesis or their character or whatever. One of the things that has struck me is you can see the wheels turning in Sarah's head as she is processing her maker projects and how she's going to organize the groups and how she's going to structure the brainstorming and how she's going to make sure that what she's doing is accessible for all of the children in her class. And so, I'm going to turn things over to Sarah.
Hi, so I'm Sarah Alley and I am not a newbie. This is my 30th year teaching in Chappaqua. A student taught here actually in 1986, 87. And I was hired by Adrian McGuire back in the day in 1987. So, this is my 30th year here in Chappaqua.
Still not lifelong learner.
At Grafflin the whole time. So, anyways. So, I'm going to talk about some of my Makerspace projects. And I've been doing Makerspace projects for a number of years now. And simply put, Makerspace projects are an opportunity for kids to think, to make, to reflect, and to improve. I have, my most current Makerspace project is a paper tower challenge. And what I've always done is I usually start with a challenge. And I put it up on my smartboard and I'll say, this one happens to be, build the tallest tower you can with the materials provided. And it's five pieces of paper, five paper clips, two pieces of tape, and one straw. And so, what I do is I give the kids an opportunity to look at the materials, plan for five minutes. This year, I divide the kids up in the beginning. I find that working, I have 21 kids, so seven groups of three seems to be a fantastic working group. I've played around with groups of four, groups of five, groups of two. And I've narrowed down, I think, three right now is a good working number. So, I give them five minutes to do their planning, give them a piece of paper if that's what they need, and then turn the timer off and give them 15 minutes to build. It's been, what I've realized over the course of all these years is that the kids have got to have an opportunity to do these projects at least two, if not three times. Because when they do it the first time, they're learning. They're going through the motions the first time. And then they have to sit and reflect and they have to talk and process and figure out, hmm, that worked, that didn't work. So, when you see the next slide, so these are my two groups. On the left, they did their first tower and it's fine. It's standing. The tower had to be freestanding. That was the other piece. It had to be freestanding. They weren't able to use all their paper. It's a fine tower, but it's not that tall. That was their first try. On the second try, same group, you can clearly see that it's got a base. They've made it much, much taller. I mean, look at Elliot, my little one on the right, and look at Elliot, she's in the middle. I mean, it's way taller than her. They figured out how to utilize the straw at the top. They realized, well, that's very light, it needs to go to the top. So, watching this group, the first time was fine, but the second time was clearly much more successful. I also feel like when we're doing the same project, I want to keep the groups the same so that they can continue to share with each other what they're learning and how they're working together. We will change up partnerships with the next project. But when it's the same project, I really want them to continue to work on their best practices and share their work together. And then we will move on and separate and make new groups. So, I always think it's important when we finish any kind of a project like this to have a whole group reflection. We kind of take a museum walk, we look at all the projects that the kids have done. But then I sit them down and we say, well, basically I ask them two questions. One, what worked well in your group? And two, if you could do this again, what would you do differently and what might you change? And when you look at the left side, what worked well? Everyone was being fair, teamwork, everybody helped. Nobody bragged that they had the best idea. And, you know, really, that's communication. And as we know, being able to effectively communicate is just vitally important across all aspects of all that we do. When you look at the right side, it's very much more design. I would tape the tower to a piece of tape or a piece of paper. I would make sure we started with a bigger base, kind of like a cake. And that side is really the design process. They realize, ah, this is what I need to do to effectively build this structure. And on the left side is all the communication involved. Well, as I do these projects, you know, as Jamie said, my wheels are spinning too. And I was like, I need to reflect. How can I take this great work that the kids are doing? I love doing these kinds of projects with my students. And how can I start to really branch it out into other parts of the curriculum that might feel a little bit more organic? And as though these are important add-ons, but, so I said to the kids, one of the important things that second graders need to be able to do is have a firm command of addition and subtraction fact. That's, you know, a common core standard for second grade. And I said, I have taught you a bunch of really great addition fact games. So, I said, I want you guys, what do you think? I haven't taught you any subtraction games. Can you guys create or invent games to teach subtraction? And so, during, at the end of math and during our ISG block, the kids are now in the process of inventing subtraction games. They are fabulous. We've probably got five variations of games that are incredibly viable. They're testing them out on their friends, they're figuring out if they actually work. We've got spinners, we've got dice games, we've got board games. But they're all really zeroing in on, how can I teach subtraction? So, we are, they've, we're basically at the end of the design process and I think next week what they're ready to do is start teaching each other. And my vision is that these games will now be part of the repertoire of math games that are available in the classroom. It's kind of hard to see, but this is one student and she's got her little plan. And she lists what you need and she lists how to play and she's got a name for it. I think it's called Dice Roll Crossout or Subtraction Crossout. And so, she's kind of figured out the rules and that she's more than happy to teach everybody else. It's been wonderful to allow me as a teacher and a learner to keep growing, watching what my children are doing, making these projects fit the needs of my students, fit the needs of my class. You know, every year you get a different profile of learners and it's been great for me to try to change and adapt. I'm really excited about this. I've never had the kids create math games. And for me, this is a new component and I feel like it's now kind of the next piece of what I want to start to be able to do. How can I make this transfer into other pieces of our curriculum day? And I think we are also going to end with a short video of a few of my students.
So, in Mrs. Alley's class 2A, we were building paper towers. And the first time, we had trouble doing the beast and it kept falling down. And then the second time, it kept falling down also. And, but we made a stronger base. And then the third time, we used the materials that were left from the second time and we built a better one than the first and second time.
So, my group worked out because, because we all got to pick on what we wanted to do to the tower and how we wanted to build it and what details we should have added and all of that kind of stuff.
I want that you need a stronger base and a lighter top.
Okay, now while the other video was done in one day, that took three days. We had to do several takes to get that right.
So, you know, again, the invitation is out if you'd ever like to come by. We do math in the afternoon. And Joe was in my class last year. So, Joe did all of these maker projects all year last year in my class, so.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
So, next we have Elizabeth Rose with us, who is now our full-time art teacher. And Elizabeth, as an artist, lives the design process. It is just the way she lives and the way she works. So, she's really been enthusiastic in sharing how she has always lived with the rest of us, but also being, you know, very thoughtful about the work that she's doing to be explicit with the kids about the design process. So, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I am very excited that the district has adopted the design process, which in my belief is truly the creative process and the nature of art. As you're aware, the design process begins with a question. Artists inherently begin with a question, a problem or a challenge. Just a few of the things that, a few of these might include such things as, what do I want to communicate? How will I communicate my idea? What effect will this have on the viewer? What if it doesn't have my intended effect? What other possibilities are there? And many more. Many of these questions help to broaden student perspective. As the artist considers what and how to communicate, they must begin by placing themselves in the potential viewer's position. This is one of the first steps in developing empathy. An example of a lesson I recently completed with fourth graders focused on shadows. Students viewed shadows in artwork and generated their own questions, such as, are all shadows gray? Before being given homework to observe shadows in their everyday life and independently formulate hypotheses and research answers to the questions that they had come up with. Are we on 16? Okay. During the next session, students were given multiple objects, flashlights, and asked to further explore shadows and develop questions as a team. Brainstorming, feedback, and collaboration continued as students worked as a team to create artwork using shadows. Students were told to use the principles of design and carefully consider their compositions while exploring the principles of light and shadow. This step in the design process led to multiple observations and discoveries, including conversations about the concepts of transparency, translucency, and the term opaque, and how these qualities in an object might impact the shadow that it casts. Students brainstormed questions and compositions, receiving actionable feedback from peers, collaborating as a team to create or make, then rethinking, replanning, and remaking their compositions. their compositions as they responded to feedback and worked together. Multiple iterations are an innate part of the artistic process, and various compositional approaches excited students. The children innovated as they began to search for different ways to change the length or the scale of the shadows, with some students casting shadows on the ceiling.
Do you want me to go to the shadow, this, this one?
Actually, if you go back to fifteen? I just wanted to mention that brainstorming and feedback is part of what I teach. Collaboration as well is taught step-by-step in the art room. If you could go back to the first one? The picture on the left, it's hard to see, there's a little girl who's wearing a blue shirt the same color as the pole. She's standing in the thinking spot in the art room, and she's looking up at the ceiling, at the brainstorming list. I feel it very important to teach the children how to brainstorm. Children and some adults run into roadblocks without having this information and practicing it regularly. As an aside, I was pleased recently to overhear a conversation in the hallway between two students. They were in a group attempting to brainstorm for a class assignment. One child was offering many different ideas, and another child was stating why those ideas wouldn't work. The first child said, Ms. Rose says not to be an idea killer, we're just in the brainstorming phase. Next one? After students collaborated as a team, they explored shadows both outdoors and indoors in their own individual compositions. Again, the students were, used the design process as their guide. Students again considered the principles of design in these individual compositions. In the final section of the design process, students shared the artwork they had created with each other. Opportunities for feedback happen at multiple points along the process, and students assess their own work and others as they present their individual pieces. They consider what they've learned from their own work as well as from others. Students are reminded that artists always reflect, asking themselves questions similar to those of my colleagues, Sarah Alley and Warren Whitney. What went well? What challenges did you face? How did you deal with those challenges? And if you could do this project again, what would you do differently? As a special area teacher at Grafflin, I am in a unique position, along with our library media specialist and our music teacher, to influence school culture on the whole because we see every student at Grafflin. One of our collective goals is to help promote a culture of problem-solving and creative risk-taking through our respective disciplines. I aim to have students incorporate design thinking as a daily habit in and out of the art studio. I remind my students that everyone is creative. Using your creativity gives you stamina and teaches you grit and perseverance.
So, it's so interesting, if you, you know, you, we've heard from these three different teachers, and we could have brought more if you wanted to sit longer, because we could talk about it for hours. And yet, it all falls under the same category of innovative learning, but they're doing very different kinds of things. We were fortunate to have the, a big part of the administrative team come and walk through the building, let's say about six weeks ago. And the other administrators were able to see more than just these three classrooms, and it was really exciting to show it off. We are still in the middle of the process, I don't know if you ever get to an end place it is, because you're constantly revising your thinking and growing and changing. But as we think of some of our next steps, certainly, when we reflect back on our journey, this was all becoming a part of the work we do. Now, it's becoming the work we do. It's almost, you know, a new normal. It's not going to be so innovative soon, because it's going to just be the work that we do. We are also making our plans to close our library mid-December so that it can undergo its transformation. And the librarian will be having all of her classes in the Makerspace. So, for this year, for half a year, every child will spend a significant amount of time in the Makerspace engaging in Maker kinds of activities. And in preparation for the Global Learning Center, we are working on our plans for units that include problems and projects that integrate and enhance the curriculum that our teachers are teaching. So, lots of exciting stuff still to come, and lots of exciting stuff going on. So, I extend an invitation at any time to come, take a look at any of the wonderful things that are going on at Grafflin, whether it's the innovative learning, whether it's our reading and writing workshop, whether it's our implementation of Math in Focus, or our art, music, gym, or library programs. There's so much great stuff going on, we'd love to have you. And at this point, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I don't have a question, but one, thank you for the invitation. I guess if I came, I would, I proudly wore my Grafflin shirt.
You must. And sing the song, Warren.
Ah, I don't, that, now we're getting a little too far here, Jamie. So, earlier in your presentation, you talked about technology, in fact, you're doing two-to-one technology. I mean, we hear a lot about and read a lot about one-to-one technology, every student should have some type of piece of technology. I like the fact that you're using innovative learning, but you're using technology to augment that, not just having an iPad for some student. And then I guess, I guess the idea is that you're not using technologies for technology, you're using it to enhance your learning. But also, as I was watching the three presentations, I didn't see a lot of technology, hard technology being used, I saw soft technology, I guess it would be, would have been harder earlier, like Play-Doh and clothespins and paper clips. So, it's, it's great that you're using multiple types of technology, if you want to talk about those other things, technology, not just trying to focus on the latest and greatest.
And that's true. And we're working hard to figure out the uses of our iPads and laptops and Chromebooks in, in an authentic way, and not in a technology-for-technology sake way. We had our TC staff developer was with our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers last week, and the whole point of her day was how do we use our new iPads or laptops, because they're different devices in different grades, as part of our workshop? And I think she kept bringing us back to, first you identify a problem that you're encountering in your workshop, and then you think, is this something that technology could assist us with? And not, how do we use the technology in our workshop, but how do we use the technology to help our writers who need help with something get that support? I thought that was so articulate, but.
Yeah, I think that's, that's really important as we do this examination into the one-to-one, to have the, you know, whatever your goal is, or whatever your vision is, be served by the technology and not have the technology come first.
Right. But there have been, you know, teachers have, now that they have it. So, one teacher, one fourth grade teacher shared that this year in writing, she has all of her students doing all of their drafting on their Chromebook. And she has been astounded by the volume of writing that she's getting as compared to past years when the kids had to handwrite it. So, that was one benefit. But the other thing that.
Well, I think that is. Are they just more comfortable?
I guess, I guess, and I think, I think writing for some is really hard. But the other thing she said that was so interesting, she said that she had them all on Google Docs, and she was sitting at the doctor's office waiting for her appointment, because I commented to her on, how do you know everybody's piece so well? There are twenty-two kids, like she could very knowledgeably in the class, I just walked in, she didn't know I was coming, and could very knowledgeably speak to each student about their piece of writing. She said, I have it with me all the time. Like, I am constantly just seeing what they've worked on, what they've added, what they've taken, and just because I have it, I can be more current and present in the conversations that I have with them about it.
So, it's more timely feedback for the student.
Exactly, which is great.
But it's also interesting to note what Warren was saying about the post-it way of writing, which was very effective too. And the technology is also effective. So, I think that all points to the value of having and respecting all these multiple ways of learning, and especially developmentally, kids are very kinesthetic at a certain age. I'm not the expert on this, and I'm sure you are, but I was struck by the writing piece because writing can be abstract. When you think about what you write, it is abstract, and kids at some point need that kinesthetic way of exploring the world, which is usually something you see with math. Like, you have small manipulables in math, and this is, it just struck me that this was almost the counterpart to that for writing. You know, the post-it notes are building something with blocks that you're thinking of writing about. So, it's that, I just, I think it's important that in our embrace of technology, which is something we should do, that we don't forget that kids are, were physical beings and that there is a developmental aspect that has to be respected. And I want to make sure we don't lose that here, that we, we respect the physical, like the, you know, the blocks, the Play-Doh, the beads, and what have you, because I think that's an essential part of the brain, you know, brain development and how that helps in learning.
It was interesting, Warren and I had a conversation after one time that I was in his classroom. We talked about, it would be interesting if he gave the kids kind of like an on-demand writing, a prompt to write, and said, you can use anything that I've taught you this year to produce this piece of writing. You could use a Maker bag, you could use Post-its, you could use, and to see who would actually, who has come to rely on the make part of it to generate their ideas? Who uses the Post-its to plan? And are they internalizing this process that he's teaching in any way and gaining any independence with it to then use it completely on their own? So, we have a plan to try it in December. So, after they've had three units of writing, where he's taught it, and he's guided them through it, and he's required them to do it, in December to do it to see if in fact they use any of those planning pieces? Because that would be interesting.
But to write anything, even if you're going to write on a computer, you need that backup planning. So, the Post-its, then the next step is to take those Post-its and write it on your computer and piece it all together much more quickly and much more efficiently. So, that, that will guide them as they grow older, and they may lose the Post-it piece at a certain point, or they may keep it in a, in a different iteration.
Exactly, exactly. They may not need to move them around and can do it on their, on their computer.
It also takes some parts of the writing process and makes them a little more concrete. So, when you say to a third grader, oh, you may want to reorganize your writing, you know, and you see this block of writing, that seems like a task that's unmanageable. But you can move Post-its around, and think about where they make the most sense, and play with it. And I think the Google Docs as well, one thing we see, I think, at all grade levels, students are much more likely to want to revise. It's just so much easier to revise your writing and make changes and move things around than it is with paper and pencils.
Absolutely. Exactly what I was going to talk about is, Sarah, you talked about how they would do the same Maker project multiple times, and how they had the determination and grit and will to revise. I found with my own kids, the idea of revising a piece of writing after they finally got it out, to then say, now go back and do it again, they're like, no, uh-uh. So, do you find that those skills that they're learning and that they're enjoying and relishing in a tangible project are translating into the less tangible projects, like revising your writing, or checking your math, or, you know? Right. It's beginning to. I think developmentally, some kids want to hold on to that finished project. And there are other kids that I think, as you start to turn around, well, how else could this go? Instead of saying, you need to add A, B, and C, it's, well, here's a finish, do you think this is finished? What might I say about it? Or, well, where else might you want to add? How else might you want it? Like, so, turning it back to them in a little bit more of a structured way, but kind of asking them, how, what would you add? But are, do you feel that they're less. Internalizing that? Or? Concerned about the feedback being critical when they've seen from themselves that they're critical on themselves, ooh, we should have made that taller, that they're realizing that the input that you're giving isn't critical, it's augmentative? Do they, do you sense that they're less defensive about open, open to that feedback? More open? I would say for the most part, yes, they're, they're fine. You know, we don't, it's, we don't talk about, well, we won or we failed. It's how much we learned. And I think that there is the beginning of that transfer into their writing. It's not that it's a bad piece that needs more, it's what more can we do? And I think they're much, I, I think that my students this year are open to the feedback and are willing to go back and revise. It'd be interesting to see if they start using the language that they, that they're using when doing the building tasks, when discussing their writing or something like that.
So, what I find, oh, I'm sorry, I was only, you're done. Fascinating is that we're asking kids at such young levels to engage in a process that adults are engaged in on a regular basis in the work world. And I just want to commend Warren, Sarah, and Elizabeth for their work in the classroom on a regular basis to transcribe some of the most important skills into our, into our classes at such a young age, and for our kids to be able to engage in our content in a way that's really meaningful. And Jamie and Deb, it's a reflection of our leadership in our building as well. So, I, I couldn't, Jamie was our first presentation, I know we've restructured our, our board meetings to highlights, to show highlights from each building, and, and I couldn't have been prouder than, than I am right now at how Grafflin presented tonight to the board. So, it's a, it's a great model for the rest of your colleagues to follow, Jamie, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was excellent.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Can I ask a question? You guys can go. You brought it up, but do we still teach cursive?
Yes, that's a good question. Go ahead, Mary. So, it's introduced, there was a handwriting committee quite a few years ago. So, cursive is introduced in third, practice, and fourth, but beyond that, students make a choice. And I think that handwriting committee maybe was six or seven years ago, actually, and we polled teachers K to twelve. And at the upper levels, we really wanted to know, do you ask your students to write in cursive when they submit something? And there was, it was mixed back then, but now with so much being submitted electronically, it's probably far fewer teachers that demand that. However, we feel that for students, they should have a choice. So, if they're introduced to it, they know it, they can choose to use it or not. There are different studies out there, some say that it's much more efficient because you don't kick your hand up and down so often, others that say it doesn't make a difference, some people find it more difficult. I think it's, it's really a choice thing, but the goal is legible writing.
Well, my teachers fit on that one.
So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Costa, who will be, I had, at a previous meeting, talked about our strategic planning process. The board has agreed to move in that direction, and Jonathan is our consultant facilitating the process for the district. So, we've asked him to come tonight to meet the board, to talk a little bit about the process that will be engaged in over the course of this year. So, if you could just give us a minute to set up, as David works, Jonathan can begin.
I didn't bring a T-shirt for you. And I guess it could have been worse, you could have had puppies too, but I'll try to follow.
We want the shirt off your back.
I know, it's okay. Thank you for having me. It's appropriate that we talk about this process in this context because it's really about building on what you just heard and making sure that with every possible frequency, kids in your district get the kind of instruction they need to learn the things that you want them to learn on a consistent basis. And that's really the purpose of the planning process. And the goal is to prepare every student for life, learning, and work beyond school, and that really means engaging in a backwards design, to have the community come together around what it is you want for a successful graduate, to then look across the landscape about what you are already doing, and then filling those gaps to make sure that with regularity, consistency, and focus at every level of your district, those things are happening. And, you know, in working to get this ready and to talking with Azum and Christine and being with your administrators, there are wonderful things instructionally happening all across the district. And this is really about connecting them around a sense of focus and agreeing on what success looks like in some of those traditionally hard-to-measure areas that are so critical. I heard communication, and I heard projects, problem solving, all those things that we know are really critical but are hard to get a handle on in terms of what success looks like, how do you give kids feedback on how to do those things? How do you give kids feedback on how to do those things better? And that's a lot of what comes out of the "what we want" and identifying where success is already happening and then just connecting it and filling those gaps. This is backwards design for planning. It is not, um, what you primarily think of as strategic planning, which often is, "Let's go out and collect all the data and see what's out there." Uh, this is about starting the process with an agreement on what you want and then driving toward that with a sense of focus. So, this is not a shopping trip. Um, you know, folks that come into this wanting more for a specific thing in a specific program are very frustrated because there are already pathways for people to advocate for specific interests. This is really about an opportunity for the community to work together on the small set of things that they all need to do together. So this is about coming together with that vision of a graduate, keeping that mission, future focus, and recognizing that you have to make choices. There are not unlimited resources. We are all constrained, whether it's time, budgets, whatever the constraints are. And in those environments, you have to be able to determine what matters and what doesn't and to focus on what matters. So this is the way this process works. And, uh, it hopes to increase the degree of alignment and coherence around your vision of a graduate. All this work really gets piled into one of these three buckets. What is it you want for kids to do? What is the "what"? How will you get there? What are those practices? And you heard a lot of wonderful discussion about innovative practices already at work in your district. But then, how do you know how well it's going? And how do you connect those three things? And that is the purpose of the process, to make sure we're clear on what the goals are, connected to your mission, have an idea of how well kids are doing in those areas, and using that feedback to improve practice. And in your foundational documents already, you have identified so many of the things that I would imagine, uh, it is that you want for kids to do. One of the challenges that we face in this process is that any one of those things is hard to measure. And the, the things that are the easiest to measure reliably are also the things that very few of you would list as the most important things you want a child to leave your district with when you're done. And this is really about how do you balance this, balance the process? So you can come to some agreement on what, what of those things matter most? And how would you know if you were doing it well? And how do we know that we're giving kids consistent feedback on how to get better? So when they're done here and when they leave, you know with as great a certainty as you can that kids can do those things and do them well before they leave you. Typically in this process, and especially here, because you, you do have an extraordinary instructional foundation, finding the balance in assessment and feedback to kids along, um, along those lines of what matters most is probably the biggest gap we'll, we'll find in the process. Driving toward, uh, valuable measures, important feedback to kids around the things that matter most and similarly to adults, what matters most in their practice is going to be a central focus of this going forward. And what we hope to end up with is a balance of measures of success. So we can talk about regions, you can talk about test scores, but you can also talk about the degree to which kids have internalized design thinking, have internalized problem solving, have internalized what it means to not quit. Uh, these are all things that matter, but how do we articulate what success looks like? And how do we talk to each other about how well we're doing? How do we make sure that we can consistently get better? And when you think about goals, measures, and practices, the truth is, organizationally, we do it not only in the classroom with students, but every year we set goals and have measures for adult practice. And every year, I'm sure, as a board, you talk about your organizational effectiveness. Well, if you believe that those high-leveraged skills are the most important things that students need to do, then that should be reflected in adult goals and it should be reflected in organizational goals. So part of connecting and being coherent as an organization is truly focusing on the things that matter, not only at the student level in the classroom, but at the adult level in professional practice and at the organizational level in terms of systems thinking. So this is another aspect of that coherent practice over time. And in addition to those three critical areas, there's also the supporting systems. How involved and engaged is the community in the process? How aligned are your policies and regulations with the things that matter most? And how are we deploying resources to make sure that we get the most out of the resources you do have to drive success at the things that you care about? And this alignment, connection, and focus on your vision of a graduate is what we're trying to accomplish. And that's the process we use. And it is a progression from vision to practice. And we start in December with that commitment to a, uh, defining the attributes of a successful graduate. Then doing the data scan on the degree to which practice is aligned currently within the district on critical systems measures. Analyzing the results to define the gaps of practice and then prioritizing those gaps and planning to close them. And that is really what it's about. Backwards design. Here are your four strategic outcomes before you start. Identify successful vision of a graduate. Commit to ensuring that adult and student learning experiences are aligned with that. That you use and report appropriate balanced measures of success also aligned with that. And that your supporting systems drive progress forward in those areas. To facilitate the process, I partner with a company from Canada called Thought Exchange. They've developed a process through which, uh, they take any email address that you want to provide them, associated with parents, students, staff, and allow them to participate in the process. There are two places in our design where we will engage as many people as you want to engage to get feedback. The first is that, that kickoff step where we will be looking at what people value most in the attributes of a graduate. And then, once we do our, uh, data collection around systems alignment, we can ask a series of open-ended questions about how people feel about the school system, how they feel about the alignment with those things that, uh, we've articulated as being the most important. And through that, not only will a core planning team get involved in this process, but you'll be able to engage your entire community at least twice in wrestling with and giving us feedback on some of the, uh, some of the, uh, key ideas that we're going to be dealing with. Thought Exchange is a three-step process. You share your ideas, you then see the ideas of others and prioritize them, and then we share back those results. So, uh, we use Thought Exchange because it helps to broaden the base of participation and ultimately for support of, uh, what, what comes out of the process. In addition, we have a wonderful partnership with your Bosse's. Assistant Superintendent Lynn Allen has participated in this process with me in, uh, three different districts in this Bosse's region. And Lynn's services come to you free through the Bosse's and she'll be with me at several of the sessions, helping behind the scenes. And, uh, we're thrilled to have the Bosse's support in doing, uh, strategic coherence planning here in Chappaqua. And really, that's it. The goal is to increase your ability to ensure that every student leaves your care with the skills and attributes they need to be successful and to focus on those things and to do it in a systemic way. One of the challenges in having people get behind this is, I say to them upfront, "We're not going to add stuff, we're going to focus stuff." And if you can do these most important things well, things get better for everyone because there's a, an increased sense of purpose and focus in the work. And as I heard your elementary folks talk about all those wonderful things they were doing, to then be able to make sure that happens across the board, you can talk about how those things are increasing the skills that you want in kids, how it helps them be more successful as they go to the next level and then on beyond that. That's really what we're, uh, what we're trying to do. Simplify, focus on the things that matter most. And that's about as fast as I can do it.
I would just like to add on to, um, Jonathan's presentation. I just want to pass down to you, um, just two pieces of information. So at a previous meeting, we talked about who would be a part of this, um, the steering committee. So, uh, we had talked, Kasum, Jonathan and I, about a potential, uh, committee makeup, so I have that in front of you, as well as, we have dates already aligned, um, with Jonathan's calendar to work on this as a, as a group. So, um, I just wanted to add that before you, um, maybe had questions or had comments that you wanted to share regarding the process.
It says one superintendent.
That's me.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I love the, the backwards approach to this. You know, so you're, you're setting appropriate goals and figuring out how to get there. Um, and I guess, you know, like we can see from the presentation, it's, it's kind of good that you were matched with the graphic presentation. They, they go very well together. Um, the skills that the students are acquiring with this different type of learning. How do you change your assessments to, to measure that? So that we can find out down the road, like the skills that they have acquired and make sure that it's matching up with our vision? Because we, if we're moving away from empirical testing that way, and you see it, like when it's explained to this, but I'm wondering how it's measured in a way that we can digest?
So, when you think about, um, that's where I wanted to be, right there. One of my roles in the agency that I work for, I'm the Assistant Executive Director, but I, uh, am responsible for a program called Skills 21. And for 15 years, we've been working to develop ways to assess and give kids feedback on high-leverage 21st century skills. And we've enjoyed support from the United States Department of Education, from the National Science Foundation. And one of the things that you really need to be able to do is think about measurement and feedback of these skills in a way that's slightly different from what we're used to. And, you know, the aphorism I would give you is, "Don't let perfect be the enemy of good." You know, I can with a hundred percent certainty assess all of your knowledge of 50 state capitals. I can with less certainty, but effectively, determine your ability to defend your choice of which of those 50 state capitals was the least deserving of the honor. So, I can give you feedback on the persuasiveness of your argument. Is it statistically reliable, the way you think of a multiple-choice test? No. But is it going to help you get better at it? Yes. So, we build multiple viewpoints.
Right, different measuring standards, yeah.
Exactly. And we show growth. So, um, of the, the wonderful writing samples that we heard talked about before, if you looked at the first writing sample from September and the last writing sample from June, and you had an agreed-upon, uh, anchor for what you thought good writing looked like for a fourth grader, you could see the growth and you could discuss it. How do we put that together in a report where then the board can say, "How are we doing as a school moving forward toward that standard? How much growth did we experience that year?" So, it's messier.
Right.
And it requires you to ask questions and to have these discussions and to see student work and to see student performances. It is not as easily captured as, "Okay, here's the standardized norm, here's the curve, there you go." So, it, it will change the way you think about it, but it doesn't mean it's not possible and it doesn't mean that we're not accountable for it either. And that sense of balance, um, is really critical. One assessment misnomer that is important to dispel, and that is, there is no reason why doing the stuff on the right well with rigor and, uh, you know, grade-level appropriate work, challenging work, will have any negative impact on what you see on the left. Because rigorous, challenging, open-ended, problem-solving work is harder than-
Memorizing a state capital, yes.
Exactly. So if you do it with rigor and in the right way, there's nothing bad that'll happen to what your traditional measures of success are. And in this district, you know what that looks like because you are very successful. But what you're doing is building that other side of the student's skill set and doing it simultaneously. And if you do it right, the better you are at one, the other comes along even though you're not focusing on it. You know, um, I did this first in this region in North Salem and, you know, they've been focusing primarily on problem solving for nine years. And nothing bad has happened to any of their traditional measures of success. So, this is really about building it up, not neglecting or doing-
No, absolutely. So you do think that the, the two can live peacefully together? Um, because I think, you know, historically, I think we've done a very, very good job below the high school level of focusing on and talking about accountable talk and feedback and, and building up all of those skills that are harder to measure. And then kids get smacked in the face when they get to high school and there's a tremendous amount of content and work and grades matter and all the things that we don't have control over here. So, from a, well, board standpoint, yes, all that stuff is great. How do you get the community to understand that we are going to be potentially focusing, enhancing those softer, less accessible skills, but we're not going to mess with that? Because that's the fear.
Right, of course. Yeah, and, uh, you won't, there's nothing you'll be able to say that will help. It'll be in the measure, in the success, in the way kids feel. I mean, the, the bottom line is for all of this, that when you go back to the, uh, to the kind of instruction that leads to success, it is time-consuming. And a lot of this is not about what are you going to add? It's what are you going to subtract? If the goal is to get as many kids to improve as you possibly can, then you, you have to believe that by doing fewer things well or better, the net gain is higher than doing tons of stuff poorly because you've got to rush through it. And the challenge for high school teachers is to believe that that is true. So if I could take six, you know, if I could take 30% of the content out but engage kids at a much higher level in the content that's left, the retained learning at the end is higher.
Oh, I'm sure the teachers would agree with you. But how do you, how do you marry that with an AP curriculum where people are pushing to take more and more and more of them when they're confined to a test? So, I mean, I think the teachers would prefer that.
And AP is, you know, I taught AP US history. And there's no way you can teach for memory. Basically, you have to motivate the learner to memorize the book while you teach them how to think historically in class. So, you know, AP is a, a different animal and so, as is IB. I mean, whatever those courses are, there's only going to be so much you can do with them. But I would argue that a, a learner who has gone through a system like you saw at your elementary school, who gets to high school with those tools- who gets to high school with those tools, is more prepared to do an AP course than someone who hasn't. It is always easier to go down a level on Bloom's taxonomy than it is to go up. So if you're used to being at that highly challenged level, you can deal with something that's less rigorous mentally. I mean, basically, we used to have rigor as volume, right? Versus rigor as challenge.
Right, intensity.
And, uh, it's just, and it's changing at the other end too. I mean, uh, it's changing at the college level. There are things in the entire eco- ecosystem that are shifting. Because, uh, you know, these digital tools are transforming the world of work. They're transforming the world of learning. And there are vestiges of a previous system that are going to be harder to knock off. But the foundations are crumbling. Because, uh, if you're going to make your primary measure something that anyone can get to if they had a, if they had a device, you know, eventually someone's going to say, what are we doing this for? I know that's not the time, it's not happening yet, but it's coming.
Yeah, I, I do think that this work we're doing, coupled with the, the controversy behind state testing, is really beginning to challenge the validity of traditional assessments. So we're, we're now trying to justify this work by saying, well, we're not messing with traditional assessments, et cetera. But at the same time, those assessments are increasingly being challenged. Because what are those assessments really testing? That you can perform on a standardized test, how, how does that translate into your life and, and your work later on? So all, all of that is being questioned.
And, you know, and the assessment infrastructure at the state and national level is shifting. They're trying, but it's very expensive. I mean, uh, my staff is trained in a critical thinking, open-ended, critical thinking assessment. Out of, uh, it's Tennessee Tech developed it, open-ended, critical thinking, open response. And you can do it, but three people have to score each paper. It is statistically reliable, but it's an expensive thing to do. So how often do you do it? Let's do it once, make sure we're calibrated, check the rubric. So it's a continuum. And the idea is move your system along the continuum toward the goal that matters most for you. And that's the point.
So I have a question about your strategic coherence planning process.
Sure.
So let's say that we decide that what's important here is innovative learning, collaboration and prob- project-based learning.
Okay.
So how do you do the data scan for that? I mean, just as an example, what will you actually do and how, what would your result analysis show? Just the structure of it.
Sure. So if you, if you look up at the gears, you mentioned collaboration, then you may mention project-based learning. I would argue that project-based learning is not a goal, it's a practice. That's an instructional practice. And one of the things that'll happen during this process is we're going to be very clear about when we talk about goals for learning, we're talking about kids, things that kids learn, things that kids do. When we talk about what adults do to help that happen, we're talking about practices. So when I think of project-based learning and problem-based learning, those are instructional strategies. The question is what are those instructional strategies designed to do? They're designed to teach kids how to solve problems. They're designed to teach kids how to think on their feet, to, uh, to adjust and adapt. So those are the goals for learning.
So you're saying that what I, what I was suggesting is part of the data?
Exactly.
And not the, the goal?
Exactly.
Okay, I understand.
So if we say that, um, critical thinking, creative thinking and problem solving are the three most important goals for learning, then the question is what kind of instructional environments are most likely to build those skills in students? What kind of assessments and measures would we need to determine how well our children are doing those three things? And then to what degree does the current instructional ecosystem make sure those things happen on a regular and consistent basis? So that when the, your students walk across the stage at Horace Greeley sometime in June, you have a sense of how well each of them are doing, the three things that you just said matter most. Because the most problematic thing about this structure is we say those are the three most important things, but it's not on the report card. It's not in a portfolio. We have faith it is, right? We believe it. But how can we really say it is the thing that matters most when we don't have the same infrastructure to support it that we do for all the other stuff that's in the curriculum? It's just about making room for it and putting our resources and our focus where our mouths are, where our values are.
If you, if you believe that we could measure these attributes in a student with some high degree of confidence, not a hundred percent, but high degree of confidence, can that be translated into measuring teacher success? Meaning that, you know, the AP PR, you know, we've always struggled with measurements for that.
Yep.
Um, is this translatable? Was it, was it one in the same, it's just a mirror?
It's absolutely translatable.
What's that?
It's absolutely translatable. But the same barriers that exist for doing it at the student level exist at the professional level. So if you have 120 standards that you're trying to teach every kid every year, how likely are you to be able to give them quality, consistent feedback on all 120 every?
Unlikely.
Professionally, you've got a, a, a teaching standard that's got 40 indicators of success. There are probably four of them that are responsible for 85% of the student outcome. How can an elementary principal who has 35 teachers to supervise give her teachers or his teachers quality feedback on 40 indicators? They can't. But if you picked four and said, we're going to do these four for the next four years, that's it. Now you, now you're getting somewhere. So the same kind of, put your system, leverage that improvement on the things that you know matter most for kids, that matter most for adults. It will translate into what matters most for systems. So have the will and the confidence to focus on those high leverage items at each point in the system. And if you do that, the AP PR will take care of itself. You can adjust the AP PR to reflect it and just do, I mean, folks in New York who do this process take one of two approaches. They just ignore the AP PR and just let the numbers be what they're going to be. Or they change it to try to reflect what they're actually going to do. That's an internal decision. The, the whole focus of what happened in 2012 at the, in the death, in the death throes of No Child Left Behind will turn out to be the largest legislative folly when it comes to educational policy in the last hundred years of American public education. There's virtually nothing positive that has come out of that, with the one exception. There is an ethic nationwide at this point that no child can or should be left behind. As ridiculous as the policy was, the ethic that we are going to challenge ourselves to educate every child to get the skills that you want is a true leftover outcome of that work. The policy that was behind it was flawed, but this process is designed to take the, the impetus for No Child Left Behind and try to make it real on things that matter.
You talked about how, um, if you do the right side, um, the left side, the traditional measures
I see.
Would, uh, take care of themselves. I think part of implementing this process is convincing the community that there's theoretical goals and then there's measurements by other people such as colleges on how, on what is a successful student.
Sure.
So do you believe that if we implement the general things you've learned about us so far, regardless of how it's being taught, um, we will still continue to get, measure highly on SATs, ACTs, whatever?
I do. And, uh, and the last six years of doing this in schools in the tri-state area demonstrate that to be true.
I want to have another question. When you talk about getting input from the community and defining, you know, what a, what a successful student looks like, the vision and the ideas that a kindergarten parent has of what makes a successful student versus high school senior parent and everything in between is so different. How do you distill and find the common threads within those vastly different groups?
Well, you, you do a little seeding. So if you look, I mean, you've done some wonderful seeding as a district. I mean, I think no one in this community is going to be surprised by the question. And I would imagine that many of the things that you've already identified as a district are going to come up over and over again. So, um, I, I don't think that's really going to be a problem. Plus, the thought exchange algorithms are really good at defining, uh, finding themes and terms and, and even developmental growth. So if we were to ask, you know, how old are, how old is your student? And then that will figure into the process. But, uh, it, it's important that you, we're going to use that data as, uh, as context, but it's not a vote.
Right.
Right? The, the, the ladies and gentlemen on the list that Christine gave you are going to take what already exists in the district, what the community suggests and are going to themselves put together what they believe is the representative sample of what that means. So it's not, it's not a vote, it's a dipstick. It's a, let's find out what the community thinks and feels.
I think, I, I think Allison's point is an excellent one. And, um, because I think all of us here realize, you know, that have kids that have gone through various stages. If you ask a parent with a child in college or getting out of college in the workforce, they're a hundred percent buying into this.
Yes.
No question.
Yep.
Elementary school parents may not. They, they haven't seen how critical those skills are in the workforce.
Yeah, I, I.
So I think getting that balanced approach is, is very important.
Yeah, I, I've done this in, I've, I've worked with high schools on NEASC, which is our New England Association. I've used those same standards to work with schools internationally. If you give me 25 parents, I will guarantee four things are going to be in their top five every single time. Every time.
And what, what are the?
Don't give it away. It's not going to tell us. It's going to be revealed later.
They're up there.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
You know, critical creative thinking, problem solving, communication, persistence. You know, these things, everyone understands that they're critical.
That's critical, right, for success.
The, how do you measure them? What does it mean? What does it look like?
And how do you get there?
What are the attributes? That's a more difficult question. And to get that to be a K-12 understanding is an even more challenging question. Because we all have different ideas of what it is. And until you've come to some community consensus on how that looks, you can't possibly get to an assessment framework or a feedback framework that you can rely on. So that, and that's why, any, like I said, any single thing that's up there is a heavy lift. The whole page is really a heavy lift. That's why you need to just.
Can they, can they all be taught?
Excuse me?
Can they all be taught?
Absolutely.
Innovation can be taught.
Absolutely. I'm married to an art teacher. And so I cha- I, I, I channel her every time. It's a continuum, just like anything else. You know, uh, natural intelligence is a continuum, creativity is a continuum, facility with language is a continuum, and we all come in, in a spot. Our job is to make sure they leave at a different spot farther down the road. So it can all be taught, everyone can get better. Our challenge here is to take the whole performance curve and move it to the right.
Do you think that our traditional grades are necessary? Uh, would, could, would it make sense to eliminate the ABCs and go to some different type of assessment feedback?
So, um, you're going to ask me to answer a landmine question before we even start? Generally, what happens is people come to that realization down the road. But if you start with it, it's a losing battle. So if, if the first day of this process is, so ladies and gentlemen, we're going to focus on what matters most, then you know what? We're going to do away with grades along the way. Train wreck, right, right from the beginning. Five years from now, you know, why are we doing this when we should just be talking about developing meet succeeds? You know, that, that'll happen, but it's not where you start. It's got to be, it's got to be where you finish.
But in an abstract, do you believe that that's?
In, in.
That it's, that it's limiting? The traditional grading systems are limiting?
Well, they're limiting because they're essentially ridiculous. You have two teachers teaching the same course who are giving grades for things that aren't the same. But yet we all believe that they're reliable, right? Ooh, we have given away too many As. Who the hell knows what an A is? Uh, so, uh, it's, it's one of those things, you know, you think you know what the English system of measurement is, but you don't really know it. Uh, we think we know what grades talk about, but we really don't know. We just hope that it's, it, it matters. So what we're trying to do is increase the reliability and the shared terminology around what good performance looks like. So when a kid goes from ninth to 10th grade, they're getting about the same feedback about the things that matter most and it's consistent across the system.
And I also would like to add, it's going to help us focus on what we're working on collectively together as a district, which is one of the most important pieces of this, uh, process for us.
And it, it, one of the things for you as a group, as a board, and boy, what I wouldn't give, I was on a board for six years, five-person board, what I wouldn't have given on a five-person board. But.
These guys hope for a four-person.
When you, when you talk about goals, when you talk about goals, they shouldn't change. I mean, when you look at the things on that list, you should be talking about them the same way you're talking about them now five years from now. When, when goals are what you want the kids to do, the practices will change and evolve and develop, but the goals don't change. And it does create that opportunity for a through line on accountability, on, um, on focus and on coherence.
Efficiency is in focus.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Okay, so now, um, we will go to our policy, uh, committee reports. We have three policies on the agenda. The first one is the life-threatening allergic reactions policy. This is the second reading. So I hope you've all received that and had a chance to look at it.
So this included additional feedback from Jane, as well as a community member had also provided some feedback. So Margot was able to review that prior to the meeting. And then there is an updated policy included in your packet. And I just would like to thank Lisa because this was a, a lot happening in the last hour for the meeting to get this all together. So we appreciate you, Lisa, for having the paperwork ready for us to review.
So this policy was more explicit about bus drivers because of the, uh, the new law allowing them to administer epinephrine through the EpiPens, although it was, it was in the regulations. And when we looked at all of the documents and the regulations together, it was initially unclear what was policy and what was regulation. So we thought it was in there. But, um, the policy itself was not explicit enough. And I thank the community member for, um, pointing certain things out.
Before you move on to that, can I comment on it?
Um, if someone, if someone would like to comment from the audience, that's fine. I think that's fine. I mean, it's not the question and comment period, but I, I think that that would be fine since we. that, that would be fine since we are-
We should discuss it first and then-
Okay. So, okay, so the board will discuss it, and then we will allow you to make a comment, and we'll take your comment into account. Um, so, any, any comments from the board?
I had put in earlier, which, uh, these are minor things that we can talk about, a comma missing or things like that, which we can send later. But there was, um, I did send something later in the day about, I think we, we needed to add some other language about transportation, that I, I think it was inadvertent that got left out of one of the policies. So, where-
Okay, was it, was it this one? I, I'm sorry, Jane.
Uh, I'm gonna, let me pull it up.
Was this, were these the comments that you had sent a few days ago?
No, just this afternoon.
Oh, okay. So, we didn't, if it was this afternoon, then we probably didn't all have the opportunity to see it.
Right. So, that can be forwarded, like, again, for the next-
Okay. So, it sounds like we need a third reading.
I think we need a third reading. I think there was just a few tinkering things that needed to be.
Although, um, the Epi-Pen aspect of it, we would like to have implemented so that the children impacted can start to take the bus. And I guess for that, for that reason-
However, that's a good point. Well, there was, uh, I can say that there was, um, I, I-
Do we have a meeting?
Well, so, okay, there's two things. First, if Jane wants to discuss the language right now, we can adjust the policy. Or, um, I believe the law becomes in effect, um, the week of December ninth, and we have a meeting on December sixth. So, whatever, whatever direction you're comfortable with, we'll still be ready for when the law becomes enacted.
Are these minor changes that we can adopt tonight?
They're minor, they're just some in the, um, the life-threatening allergic reactions policy. There were some recommendations made to us by a community member to add, um, changes in, um, the first and second paragraph, and they were only made in the second, not the first. I think we just need to make it consistent to make sure everything's in there in terms of bus transportation. So, I just think something was inadvertently left out. So, uh, Jane, do you wanna read where you want me to add that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that up in a second, 'cause I sent it to you. I, I actually sent it to-
What am I having from, what version?
I sent it to Margot, our council, and I didn't send you the details. So, I'm gonna try and, um, locate that for you in a second. Let's, um, let me pull this out in a second. Is this Wednesday? I'm gonna try and do my own notes because I think that will be easier.
Are you sure that wasn't the first paragraph in the other policy, administration of medication? Because that was made-
No, that was made, that only needs a comma in it. But, um, the one that is, um, life-threatening allergic reaction, the first paragraph-
Mm-hmm. So, five oh seven seven.
Five oh seven seven. Upon notification and identification of a student with a life-threatening allergies by a parent guardian and with complete documentation, the district will work with parents, guardians, students, school personnel, medical professionals on a case-by-case basis. We're missing the transportation element there. Okay. So, um- And, and- Bus drivers employed by the, by the transportation contractor. Exactly. So, that needed to be in the first paragraph as well as the second. So, it's in the same. Okay. So, we can add that in, the second reading, not a problem?
Is there any way we can show this?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna-
So, that the person who wants to comment knows what we're talking about?
Okay, so we may be able to adopt it tonight.
Yeah. Um, that was, that was it, and then just-
Can you type it in right now?
We're missing a, a comment, a, a comma, one that was left out. On, 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 I'm sorry. I know people may not have seen my memo before this. The, um, this is the administration of medication. It's the seventh line down from the top.
Oh, let, let's just do one, let's do one policy at a time. We'll, we'll-
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Let's catch that-
Okay.
When we talk about it.
Lisa, we have these posted online as well, right?
We didn't get these posted online yet. We'll have them posted online first tomorrow morning.
Do you have a, is it, is it a Word document that you can, that you'd be working with?
Okay.
I, I guess I only have one question regarding the cafeteria, cafeteria guidelines.
You mean, you're looking at the regulation or the policy?
I'm looking at the, I guess, the regulation, yeah, okay. It's already in there, in this one.
No, in the second paragraph it is, or something in the first paragraph?
It is, oh, yeah.
Oh, she just put it in. This is the most updated one.
Yeah.
Okay.
She just put it in. So, there it is.
Okay.
Oh, this is the, the most recent one? So, we did-
We just put that in.
Oh, you just, yeah.
So, there it is, Jane.
Right. So, bus drivers employed by the transportation contractor.
So, I have, I have a question regarding the regulation, but I can't bring it up to you.
Life-threatening allergic reactions, do we wanna say in school and during transportation? Do it, like, there was a suggestion that should be there, so that we reduce the likelihood of that here.
Can, I'm sorry, Jane, can you be more specific?
The last sentence where, the, the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Right here.
Yes, uh, right.
In school already, right?
Right. And then, you would put comma, just listen to me, including when being transported on school buses. Yes. So, comma. And, and including- Including when being transported- When being transported on school buses. So, it matches the second. Yeah.
I was hunting pack typers.
Right, it's just, it's matched. You can- It's bolded on the bottom there, John. Being transported on school buses. Warren, did you have a question about the regulations?
Yeah, but regulation is more of a management-
Right.
-issue. So, I'll, I'll bring, I can discuss that with you directly, Christine. It's not-
Being approved tonight, correct?
On school buses, right.
Right. And then, that's, that was the change.
Okay. Any other comments?
On the policy, no.
No, I'm fine with that.
I move that we-
Um, hang on, now we have someone. Okay, the gentleman would like to, to come up and make a comment.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thanks for listening to my-
I can raise that.
Sure, okay. Good evening.
You can hear me anyway. Uh, my name's Saul Leopold. I'm a community member. I have three kids in the school. And I think that I'm, um, coordinating with the same, um, community member that made these suggestions. So, this addresses all of our proposed, our proposed revisions for this policy. I have a couple of similar ones for the other one when we get to that.
Okay.
But I want to thank you for taking the time to consider this.
Absolutely.
Situation, because we have one child with a fetal, obviously.
Yeah, of course. You're very welcome.
Absolutely.
All right.
I move that we, we, uh, adopt policy five zero seven seven as amended, um, this evening after the second reading.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Policy is hereby amended. Thank you very much for working on this.
Okay.
Okay, so, next is policy number five oh seven eight, administration of medication.
Are we gonna pull up that policy?
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a comma? Yes, just a comma. It's a, I don't know where we-
Where's the comma?
The parenthetical.
Yeah.
Himself administers under the direction of a nurse or train, and there should be comma, there's an end and end.
Right.
The, the parenthetical comes out, and, yeah, what should be a comma? Popping up. Administration of medication policy.
Doesn't have a number, so.
I know.
Five oh seven, it's a good number.
So, you can see the corrections there, seven lines down, where it's crossed out, administered herself, under the direction of a nurse or train school personnel. Oh, now it's there. Okay, they made the change. Okay, it wasn't there on my draft. That's, that was the comma I was looking for. It was not written. Okay, we're okay.
Can someone tell me if the parentheses is, is deleted?
It is. It's, I can see the line through it. It is. That's why, like, that was deleted.
And the comma's there instead.
But the comma's there, replacement. Mm-hmm. Now, it's fixed.
Okay. Any, any other, um, comments or changes from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Um, any, any, um, comments from the audience?
So, on this one, the first paragraph, you got those two revisions in there that we were, uh, going to propose. And the next paragraph, regarding the sent, the sentence that starts with, "School nurses, they may dispense over-the-counter medications routinely kept in the office, um, to students whose parents and medical providers have consented, uh, to administration of those medicines." So, here's the question. Is that paragraph broad enough to encompass administering the Epi-Pen on the school bus? Because, um, it refers to medication being given in the health office, and our concern is what's going on as well on the school bus. So, is that gonna be broad enough for the school bus, uh, personnel to be authorized and feel comfortable?
I think this is, that's two different issues, right? This is for over-the-counter medicines. If your kid needs Tylenol during the day and you have that form filled out from the nurse, the, the Epi-Pen, I think, is covered by the first paragraph.
Right.
Um, and that's two separate kinds of medication. One is a nurse supervisor, and one is, you know, you have it the consent-
Prescription, non-prescription herbal remedies.
So, I, I mean, I, I believe it's covered if you think that there's language that is unclear.
Smoke someone else.
The first paragraph-
The first paragraph, because we did add the school buses whenever it's necessary for students to take medication during school hours on school buses, authorized and licensed-
Prescription and nurse, not prescription.
Right. And that's why we said an off, you know, um, the school nurse under training, authorized and licensed school personnel and/or bus drivers employed by the transportation contractor, you know, and it talks about the administration of all of that on the bus. So, it's now encompassed that first paragraph.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be self-carrying.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, we have, um, regulations to help guide the process. And the kids who have to have, um, Epi-Pens on the bus that can't self-administer will all have health plans that will be developed by the building principals. So, we feel like we're in good shape with the way that this policy's written. So, they will self-carry.
No kid could, if they're having an infantic attack, self-administer, no matter what age or anything. They couldn't have, someone else has to do it, and it won't be another kid on the bus. It's gotta be the driver.
That, right, which, which is what's- So, we, we have a process in place to prepare our drivers to help support kids, particularly at the elementary level. So, any parent that, um, will be in this situation will be contacted by our school nurses to help facilitate that process for them. We'd like to start that, though, soon. So, the sooner we adopt the policy, the better. And then, we can always, um, if, let's say, since it's the first time anyone's ever created a policy like this, which is true, since the law just passed, we could always revise it if we feel like we need to make some adjustments as we learn, um, learn this process.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
I move that we adopt policy five oh seven eight as amended this evening.
Second. Uh, any further thoughts, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Policy, both policies are, um, adopted and on the books. Okay. Um, you think we should, we should post these on the website?
Mm-hmm. I think we should do, um-
Close it prominently.
I think we should do a little press release.
Hey, Jo, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Jo.
Thank you.
Very patient, much appreciated.
I think we should do a little press release. I'll work with David on it, since we're probably the first district to adopt a policy like this.
That'd be great. So, I think we should make a big deal out of it. So, we will. That's great. And we had the original press release because it, it originated from our district. From, yeah. So, um, so, the next policy is a first reading of the public participation at board meetings. And as you saw, we are very, we are flexible.
We're gonna pull this up right now, too.
Okay.
And we've been talking about this for some time. Um, and I think this is the first time that we're actually looking at a composite policy based on all the feedback and input that we've discussed at earlier board meetings. Um, but again, it's a first reading, and we are just trying to-
Can I, can I ask a structural type of question? Why is this second part, school district sponsored, it's a same-
I was going to, I was going to bring that up.
It has nothing to do with that.
That was, um, that was put in there, you know, we, we work on these policies with our lawyers, and for, for some reason, this part was included. And, um, I just thought we would, we would talk about it because it's a first reading, and we can bring things in draft form. So, that was my comment as well, that I was going to make about this, this section, uh, that it should be a separate policy on school district-sponsored presentations.
Yes. I think so. We have to separate it out.
One of the things that is difficult about the way our policies are written is, is that a lot of policies are embedded-
Right.
-in other policies. So, it's very difficult to, um-
Teasing.
-to tease out because they're, they're not all in clear and separate categories.
Then this would be perpetuating that.
Exactly.
Right. So, now, now's the time to fix that, yes.
So, that's why I, I would suggest that we-
Yeah, I was unclear with that one.
Uh, put a separate policy, um, school district-sponsored presentations could be a policy. I don't know what you think, Christine, because I think that's what this is meant to address.
Right. So, I think that we should pull out whatever you'd like to pull out. And then, during our review process that we're having of all of our policies, we can address it when we get to that point in our, um, process, right? Because you would wanna create a new policy right now-
If we don't.
-to address that when we, we haven't, um-
This is the first reading. I didn't understand that part of it either. I, I suggest we pull that whole thing out.
We're going, we're going to pull it out, and we'll examine it as a separate category.
A separate policy, okay.
We do need a policy on, on school presentations, which could be a good idea.
Yeah.
Because we don't know, you know, people are invited to present, and sometimes you may not know what to expect. So, it'd be good.
So, we'll take that out of this policy. And then, when we're going through our policy review with the policy committee, we'll ta, talk about it again at some point to see if it's something we need. Okay. Just wanna make sure I know what you want to do. Okay.
And we already have a policy one zero zero five. Is this just superseding the whole thing, or is this an added up?
Um, we're just replacing it.
Update. We actually had two policies, right? We had two policies that were combining into one.
What's the other?
Um, it was a combination. It, this was broken out into two pieces when we looked at it originally with Margot.
One zero zero five, what was the other?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me.
We don't have, we don't have that in front of us.
I don't have the old policy book, but I can look online, see, I can- One zero zero five.
It was in the book, it was, it was in the board-
It's like a code of ethics. Conducting public civil, business with civility.
That's one of the five.
Um, so, we put them both together. I think what it was, was the public comment was listed on our agenda, but wasn't in there.
No, it's in the, it's in, if you go back to, it's on the board.
I think it was a very short policy emphasizing civility, the value of public comment and civility. It was like, maybe a three sentence, three-
That's correct.
Three-line policy.
And this is a, we've, we've made the determination already to have one public comment, or does it say?
We, we did.
Yeah.
Uh, we talked about having the one public comment where we've, we've put it on the agenda.
Did not two.
That's right.
Why even make a number in a policy? Why not make it determined by each board that decides what to do?
Do I say that again?
Meaning that instead of making a policy that we have one, or maybe you should say at least one, um, meaning that maybe this is, maybe the next year's board, um, wants to have two. Then we gotta change the policy?
Yeah, it's not hard to change a policy.
Yeah, it's not hard to change a policy.
Well, we make policy all the time, and then we have subsequent.
All the time, but I think we had gone back and forth on this and had landed at that, and we wanted some clarity with our policy, so we thought it was important. Because actually, the public comment used to be just mostly listed on the agenda, I think, and how we were doing it. So, we wanted to expand 1005 and set forth.
It's still a separate agenda.
It's also for the committee to understand.
What Jeff is asking is whether we should have one or two, and the flexibility.
I'm not asking whether we should have one or two. I'm saying that we have all these other policies, like 507-7, where the policy is somewhat honestly vague. And then we have four pages of regulations that the public doesn't even get to see. So, we have, why is that one very open-ended? And why not make this one more open-ended and less constricted to the board? Let each board make a decision on how many public comments. This thing is really about civility, three minutes, and how to act during a public comment, right? So, instead of saying one public comment, how about saying at least one? And then everybody can decide, and every board can decide without having to change the policy every time.
Or we could decide to change it as well.
You could decide to change it next week for some reason.
Which is, by the way, the reason that these other policies have explicit and lengthy regulations is because the administration has to implement the policies. This is a policy for us to implement at our board meeting. So, we don't need regulations.
Employees.
Right. Regulations are for the staff to implement a policy.
Yeah, but if you look at Policy 507-7, they have all these things that the public has to do, the parents shall. But how are they going to know that if they can't even see the regulation?
Regulation is attached to the policy.
Because in those cases, the parents are sent notices, and this is how parents are, this is instructions to the staff about how parents are notified. But each regulation is different, so we're talking kind of out of context. So.
I don't think we are, by the way.
The regulation's wrong.
I have a question regarding the last bullet there on the screen right now, right there. The board president may cut off, and the previous few bullets, you say shall. Shouldn't this place be shall, shall, shall cut off?
Where is that, John? Which bullet?
Last bullet. Right before the super, school district sponsored.
Well, because I guess it gives the board president the option.
It's discretionary.
If someone is.
Right, but then you get selective about it. Then we let.
Because then there may be different, different, um,
I agree with the wording as it is. I think it's appropriate.
There may be different opinions about what is respectful, what is civil, and then someone will say you had an obligation.
Well, that's what the board president should.
It just gives discretion.
Yes, I think they shall conduct themselves in a certain manner, but that if they don't, you may cut them off. I think that's appropriate as written.
I don't see any case where we shouldn't cut off a person who's not acting appropriately. What if they continue acting unappropriate?
Appropriate behavior might be subjective.
Right. And the board president needs discretion. You may think it's inappropriate, Vicki may think it's appropriate. So, I think that has to be the discretion of the person who would be cutting off.
I think some discretion is important when you're dealing with human behavior and dialogue.
Discretion is still involved. You didn't say shall. It's still up to the board president to determine what is appropriate or inappropriate.
Okay. I like it, I would opt to leave it the way it's written.
How do you?
I would opt to change it to shall.
How do you enforce the policy?
How do you enforce it?
It's a discretionary policy.
Well, I think that you can cut off, if you cut off the speaker, and if that's part of our policy, we would have the right to then cut off the microphone. If someone is abusing public comment period.
How we would implement the policy, whether we turn the lights off, whether we take the microphones, whether we, you know, that would be a regulatory implementation of the policy?
We could stop the meeting. I mean, there are different things depending on the circumstances. I don't think that we're here to delineate every single possible, you know, possibility. That could happen in a public comment period. I'm sure there's.
So, can we put them to one sentence or two sentences for the goal of this policy?
It's in the first two paragraphs. But the goal is to ensure civility, to ensure the opportunity for everyone who wants to speak to have the time, so the time is there to come up to the microphone. So, you know, that's a three-minute rule, because sometimes people have been put off. People have been put off by the lack of civility. I think one thing we might add here that we discussed but didn't make it on here is a request that the audience not
cheer.
Cheer, or boo, or clap, because, you know, even if the audience agrees with what people are saying, if someone has a differing point of view, they would then feel intimidated or deterred from coming up to the microphone to express an alternate point of view. So, the idea is to provide a welcoming forum for people to express diverse opinions.
In a civil way, and to let people know what the policies are, so it flows efficiently and civilly. And I think that's very, this is a very typical policy that we've discussed putting in place for a long time.
So, you'd like another bullet about, some commentary about public outbursts?
Yes.
Audience participation.
All right. I'll work with.
We can work on that for the second reading.
What do I suggest the changes to? Policy committee?
Yes. But so far, your suggestion is to leave the number of public comment periods flexible in the policy?
Right, it's one of, at least one.
At least one, yes.
But you know what? If we, wait one second. If we do that, then isn't the policy vague as to what we're supposed to do? I'm not comfortable with that. I understand the point you're making, and it makes sense, but now applying it to the policy, we would be saying that there shall be one or more public comment periods. Well, then how many do we have?
It's part of the regulation. It's part of the board president's implementation of that policy.
We don't, regulation is for staff. It's not for the board. We're not going to have a regulation to this policy. We're in charge of implementing the policy. So, okay, well, this is my opinion. I think that if we want one public comment period for now, that we leave it
I agree with Vicki.
in the policy. Otherwise, it's not clear as to what we're supposed to do.
I think the whole purpose of doing this is clarity. And policies can be changed, but watering down a policy and making vague, I don't think serves either us or the public. Because I think if you say at least one public comment period, we had discussed, we've discussed on other occasions whether there's one or two. There are suggestions, even I at some point suggested that there should be two, maybe at different points, for non-agenda items versus agenda items. And we've discussed it and circled back, where I was under the impression that we were all somewhat under agreement that we would have, for now, a single comment period. But I think that could cause confusion with the public as well, because let's say that puts pressure on Vicki as the board president. If we leave that discretion, that say we have at least one, and you have a community member or someone who's demanding another one, saying, well, you have the discretion to allow it, it makes the meeting very inefficient, and it's confusing for both parties. And I don't agree with the lack of clarity.
And expectations for everyone.
But then why are we putting may in the may cut off the speaker?
Because that's actually different from a legal standpoint than the shall. A may and shall are different.
If we're going to get very specific, does this say when the public comment period is going to be?
No, but it's on the agenda.
So, some things are in here to make it very specific, and some things aren't in here to make it very specific. We all want everything on here, so it's very clear. The board sets, the board president sets the agenda. Right, and that's how the board president could do the may, and that's how the board president can do one or more. Right. But I guess we could always, if the board president decides, you know, I'd like to have a second comment period. Is the board in favor of that? He or she could ask for that.
Well, look at what happened today. Someone wanted to comment on the policy that we were talking about, so we allowed that. I think we would want to do something, so maybe we should put something about flexibility? I don't know. I mean, what do you think about what happened tonight? The policy's not effective. So, what if the policy was effective, and someone wanted to comment on?
You would have to say sorry for the public comment period. And make him and his young child stay here.
But then we would have adopted the policy.
Yeah, I think we would have to talk about, probably, we would have to have put that policy adoption after the public comment period.
Yeah.
We'd have to be smart about the agenda.
Right.
If we're going to be more.
I think.
Adhere to the policies.
But also, I like having the committee reports before questions and comments, because people will hear what we're working on.
Right.
And usually, people leave after a public comment.
But that's your.
So, the adoption can wait until after. So, I think that's a good idea.
Put that in the agenda.
That is exactly why I think we should have one or more. You have your discretion to say, we have these policies that we need to talk about, and before we pass the policy, we should let the public speak out. But we're not going to just let the public just go wild here, because that's going to happen after these reports. And that's why one or more makes sense. The practice could be one, but to make the exception occasionally because of situations like this. But again, I don't think you have to have it in a policy. President can say, I'd like to have another comment.
Okay, but that was not a public comment period. That was my allowing one community member to comment on a specific policy. It wasn't a general public comment period. So, if we put one or more, that means one or more general public comment periods, where people could come up and talk about anything, not something that's specifically on the agenda.
I guess we should vest the board president with the powers.
What I think we should do is, if the policy's adopted as written, that if we have a situation like what came up, that the board president can request the board for.
But what about this? What if we just say there shall be public comment period as recognized in the agenda? So, if you set the agenda, what president sets the agenda? And if you put one comment period on the agenda, that meeting, there'll be one comment period. If you see that there's a robust meeting where there's going to be maybe a need for an opportunity for more, you put that on the agenda.
Do you have that? Yeah, so we could have done. We could have written under the policies, comments on the policies.
On the agenda. I mean, the goal of the policy is to communicate civility.
And also clarity, so the agenda's clear.
Look, this is all beneficial in terms of clarity. I think as clarifying as we can get, whether we say that as, that there will be a public comment period as set forth in the agenda. And then if we feel now, because it comes up, as things come up, we realize, gee, now that we're on somewhat of a mission to update our policies, that if that's going to be more, like, I think that's going to be on the agenda more frequently now, that we could, you know, leave, you could have a bullet point in here that, you know, the board president's discretion, should people wish to comment on policies that are about to be enacted or something, and we can work on that.
I think what Allison says is perfect. You know, there'll be a public comment period as noted on the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good solution, too. And also, one other goal is efficiency in the meeting. So, again, if we're vague about the number of these general comment periods, it's very inefficient.
That works.
Time-wise.
And then it is clear, because the agenda gets published, and that people will know before each meeting.
Okay, so is that, does that do it for our second reading?
That's a first reading.
I mean, I'm sorry, second reading. I mean.
First reading, yes.
I really want this to be over. I'm sorry. It's a little bit late.
That does it for a very long.
Freudian slips.
Yes.
Okay. And any comments we sent to the policy?
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Now, we come to the public comment period. Anyone in the audience have a public comment? Please come up to the microphone. Okay. Okay, seeing that there are no comments from the public, we can move on to the rest of the agenda.
Can I just, it would be helpful if any of you had feedback regarding the public comment period. If you could send that, we're meeting with Margot tomorrow at 1:30. So, that would be a good time for us to talk about it, so she can create something else, but not.
I don't know if I can get my comments together by tomorrow at 1:30.
Okay, well, if you can, if you can't, that's okay.
Just a suggestion. Okay. All right, so ready to move on to approval of minutes? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 1st meeting?
Second.
Any questions, any comments for Lisa? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Recommended action on personnel?
No, we didn't approve the minutes, we accepted the minutes. I didn't accept it.
Yes, we vote on accepting the minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so with 4.1 instructional, I'd like to recommend all of the motions, with the exception of the assistant track coach for indoor track for the winter. I'd like to table that for a future meeting.
I move that we table the assistant coach for indoor track for a future meeting.
I second approval of all those and tabling that one.
Do we do it in one motion, or do we have to do it?
All in favor?
Yeah, because we're.
Move as amended.
As amended.
Move as amended?
Can I have a question? May I have a question?
Yes.
When I'm looking at the positions and the salaries and the steps, we have three people, two assistant coaches, one of them being tabled, have, both in step one, yet have materially different salaries. How does that, how does they determine the difference in salaries? If they're both in the same step?
In the contract, there are points assigned to each position.
It's the sport, or is it? I mean, honestly, it looks like the female is getting the short end of the stick here.
No, it's sports.
It's a sport. So, it's the sport. So, we determine certain sports are worth more than other sports.
And that's negotiated.
And a step, but everybody who's in the same pointed sport on the same step will have the same salary. Okay.
Are we ready?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would just like to welcome Linda, our new student life coordinator at Horace Greeley, who'll begin on Monday. I know that was really important to the community, that we move forward and appoint a person to that position as soon as possible. And I'm really happy to be able to present her to the board. She met with you earlier today, and I think she'll be a great addition to the high school.
Yes, it was a pleasure to meet her right before the meeting, and I thank her for coming just to meet us. So, pleased to have her.
So, I would recommend all the actions under 4.2 non-instructional.
I move 4.2.
I second 4.2.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to approve all the CSE summaries reported to the board today, November 15th, 2017.
I move 5.1.
My second.
Questions?
I just want to thank Heidi for being responsive when I sent her questions about things.
Yes, thank you very much to Heidi. Yeah. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, there were no amendments to that 5.1? No. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution, item 5.2.
I move item 5.2.
For services to help the district clerk?
I second 5.2.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yes.
Oh, this is 5.3.
We have a motion, we have a motion to, we move 5.3, item 5.3 from the table.
I move to take 5.3 from the table. I second taking 5.3 off the table.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve item 5.3 regarding a contract with Katona Lewis-Borough for educational services for one student.
I move item 5.3. I second 5.3.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion on item 5.4 to authorize the board president to sign a consent and release regarding the town of Newcastle's streetscape and infrastructure improvement project.
I move 5.4.
I will second. Any comments?
Wait, it says, as presented at this meeting.
So, I do have a question, but if you please just give me some time to get this on my iPad.
Couldn't look.
Because I don't have my binder. Because I don't have my, I don't have my binder.
Do you need it? And I have a question about it.
John, do you know if the material for the move thing was the same slate that's on the...
The bookmark is not working. Oh, here it is, okay, I got it.
I think they really don't want this rule.
There was, I thought, I was looking at my phone, it's kind of small. But I thought it was just some sort of copyright thing.
Yeah, I think they thought it was too massive.
So I didn't bring this up before because I just noticed it today. In the consent and release agreement, if you look at the first page, do you all, you have it? If you look at the third paragraph, paragraph number two is an indemnification, which is written as it should be. But if you go back and look at paragraph number one, under the therefore clause, the owners, that would be us, release the town of Newcastle from any liability for damages to our premises except for any damage caused by the town's negligence. So if the town is not negligent and they do the work, but for some reason there is some damage, they're not responsible? Doesn't, that seems to conflict with the indemnity clause in paragraph two. So I don't understand that. I, maybe there's something that was not written correctly?
Yeah, our attorney reviewed it, but we certainly can table it.
There's something that's not quite right there.
David Shaw gave the...
Right. So what we're doing in this paragraph is we are releasing the town from any liability from damage to our property that has occurred...
Because of the work done.
That has occurred, except for damage caused by their negligence. So I'm just saying that there could be, there could be damages, even without their negligence.
Yeah, they could accidentally short-circuit the entire logical system because of something they're doing there.
Conceivably, that would be negligent.
I know, it just seems like an odd paragraph to have there.
So can we table this and speak to attorneys?
Yep, okay.
So maybe we can put this on a future meeting.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to understand exactly where the work is taking place. I looked at the drawings, I see that they're taking place on Greeley Avenue, I'm assuming right across from the train station.
There's actually a sign, a demo sign there.
Basically, is the frontage of the field.
Right in the corner where Bank America is into that parking lot?
No, this is not just the signage, this is the larger...
They're improving the sidewalk.
Right.
They're making sidewalk and landscape improvements.
So they are asking all the owners, so the buildings, the two designers.
Right, and what's going on on Center Street? Is there something there as well? Because they mentioned Center Street.
When does it have to be done by?
I think that's right in front of the community center.
Okay. Right, okay.
When did they expect our approval by, John? Do we know?
Well, they were expecting it today, but they're not going to receive it, and that's okay. And then if they have some kind of time pressure on them, I'll communicate it back with you so then we can look to see if we need to have a meeting.
Or maybe we can have at least a forum of the Board come and approve it.
So we'll work on this.
I mean, we don't want to make their lives more difficult, but on the other hand, this is...
Well, I mean, I need to get the signature of every single person who owns property along the way.
It's a good question, so.
Okay. So do we need to just not vote or do we need to table it? So do we, okay, so may I have a motion to table item 5.4? I move we table 5.4.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve item 5.5. This is a bid award to the, for general construction to JAC Building and Development Group for various rates, cost of materials and projects. I move 5.5.
I second.
Okay, can you let Christine or John, if you want to explain, John?
Sure, and this is a trade that we always have in place, and the reason we have to rebid is because we have a three-year term, so it's time to rebid this out. So what, this is for general construction laboring materials, so if we have a small construction, which is not a capital project that we need to do during the school year, and our own maintenance crew cannot do it, then we get this firm to come to do it. This is really, right now, we don't have any specific project in mind.
This is pre-negotiating rates in case we need.
We always have this trade, and we have plumbing, we have electrical, and we have several basic trades out there, always ready to work, well, if we need it.
Good, okay, thank you, John. All in favor, item 5.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an addendum. We have a motion to approve item 5.6 to appoint a hearing officer as stated in the agenda. I move item 5.6 with resolutions. We have a second.
I have a quick question, is this something I missed in...
No, we've been talking about this, and I had let you know previously that this would be an action that would be taken today.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have another item on the addendum, item 5.7.
I move item 5.7.
A second? Okay, so it's part of a retain agreement with our law firm. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the financials. I would like to take items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 together if no one objects. So that may have a motion to approve those three items.
I so moved.
May I have a second?
A second?
So I have a question, John, I was curious, at this point in time, it's, you know, November, and I'm just curious about both the revenue and appropriations report and how that, how those would compare to last year.
That's the same month.
Yeah, year to year.
If you look at the percentages, about, very similar. You know, when it comes to revenue, most of the collections that we have right now, they are mostly property taxes because the residents already paid the first half. So the money would transfer to us, so that's the revenue side. And the appropriation, so the expenditure side basically is the same. Very similar to last year when you look at the percentage. It's mainly payroll and debt service that we have to pay.
And would it be relevant to ask how they compare this month to last month, do a month to month?
So...
It's just hard to, you know, to tell by looking at the numbers every month. It's better, it's good to do a comparison.
So if you compare to last month, you know, I had the footnote on the bottom, for the revenues, we collected $25 million, and mostly from taxes. And expenditure, we spent during the month of October, we spent $9 million, and probably about $7.5 million will be salary benefits related.
Thank you, John. Any other questions on financials? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings. Next meeting will be Wednesday, December 6th, at 7:30 PM here in the Academic Commons. We'll have two presentations, we'll have the West Orchard Elementary School innovative and programmatic highlights, and we will also have the report from Interactive, Carol Shakeshaft, and Dale Mann. The meeting following that will be Wednesday, January 10th, here at the Academic Commons. We'll have our budget preview. We'll also have a roaring book, elementary school presentation, much like we had today for Grafflin, and there'll be a facilities update with Joe Grumondo. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:13 PM? All in favor, please say aye. Our meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving in place, everyone, have a very nice Thanksgiving.